Towards men, love, family, friendship. And whether you are religious or not, let's keep in mind that this is a time of year to be thankful for what we have, to love each other a little closer, and to celebrate with those who we love during the darkest, coldest times of the year. Let's be quiet for just a moment and reflect on that. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic in which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, sir. Mayor Buckley, Alderman Huntley, Alderman O'Neill, President, Alderman Pendell Charles, President, Alderman Finlayson, President, Alderman Shana Meyer, President, Alderman Gay, here, Alderman Savage, President, Alderman Arnett, President.
Thank you.
Mr. City Attorney, please present the first item.
Yes, sir. The first item on the agenda is approval of the agenda.
Okay. Could I get a motion to approve the agenda, please?
Second.
Yep. We need to add to the agenda, please, the City of Annapolis Awards for our standing contribution to resilience and sustainability for the future for Matt Earl and Patrick Danker. And Alderman Gay, did you have something to add, sir?
Thank you. No, I need to remove 01124. No?
Okay. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
Yes, sir. The next item on the agenda is ceremonial items, City Council Citation ID 17424, Annapolis Boat Show Presentation.
Right. You're presenting to us instead of us presenting to you? Thank you. All right.
Okay. I don't usually have trouble projecting. So I'm here representing the Annapolis Boat Shows, making a presentation of a check for the use of City Dock to put on two excellent shows this past fall. Heading into the shows, we were nervous for a couple of reasons. Interest rates had gone way up. We had that thing that happens every four years. The federal election tends to really dampen boat sales and attendance at the boat shows. And then we had flooding all week, the week before we started moving. So we went in really anxious. As it turns out, we had nine sunny days of boat shows. People were buying boats. Attendance was not as great as it is in non-election, non-high-interest-rate years, but still really, really good. And so I am excited to present a check to the City of Annapolis for $529,365. And the mayor and I are going to be walking City Dock later this week or early next week just to look at how the shows and the city will work together through the construction process and afterward. And we're excited that it's going to start soon. We're done with the flooding, hopefully. And we like the plans a lot. We're working on the edges. We're working on making everything fit. But I hope that when I'm up here next year, we will have taken a little break in the construction and be heading into our last year of City Dock construction. Construction.
Thank you so much. Thank you. All right.
Yes, sir. The next item on the agenda is City Council Citation ID 17724 to Mr. Jerry Lincoln.
Right. Do I have? Hey, Jerry, how you doing? Is that my thing down there? Great. Cool. Just looking for your citation, Jerry. How you doing? Please come forward. So Rhonda, you should come up. The citation's in your own. Now you do it good. Awesome talk. Not only can you get out of here that easy. So just, I might let Rhonda read this citation, but Jerry has been with the city for a record amount of years. And Karma from the Transportation Board is here as well. This is kind of exactly what public service represents. This man has taken care of you, protected you, driven people around this city for decades and has an impeccable record. And we're going to miss him so much, but we just want to say a huge thank you. And so little citation here for you, and I'll hold this while you talk.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're joined here, as the mayor said, by Alderman O'Neill, who's the Chair of our Transportation Standing Committee. And I see your lovely wife, who retired from Anarone County Public Schools. And thank you so much. City Council Citation, on behalf of the residents of the City of Annapolis, we're delighted to present the City Council Citation in recognition of your remarkable retirement after 38 years of devoted service with Annapolis Transit. Throughout every season and along every route, you brought skill, patience, and kindness to your work, touching the lives of countless residents and visitors alike. You have been a steady presence on our roads and a friendly face to our community. Your unwavering commitment to safety and reliability has helped make Annapolis a better place to live and travel, and your contributions will be missed by all. As you step into this next chapter, may your retirement be filled with wonderful adventures, cherished moments with loved ones, and of course, plenty of time to enjoy football, baseball, and travel. Congratulations and thank you so much for your extraordinary service to the people of Annapolis, presented to Mr. Jerry Lincoln on this day of November, oh, November 12th, but today is December 2024. And why don't you come on up, Mr. Director? All right. Thank you so much, Mr. Lincoln. We really do appreciate it.
We'd like to thank Jerry for his tireless time and with us, with our agency, all the years he spent training and nurturing, nurturing a lot of our employees as a supervisor here. Mr. Parker, he helped him along the way as he was starting out as a new bus driver, a supervisor, made it up to superintendent. A lot of these things.
Thank you. You want to say something? Yeah. I'm good. I'm good. I'm good. You sure you want to ring this in?
I just want to say thanks to everyone, and I enjoy being here in Annapolis, doing what I do. If I could, I'd keep on, but I can't. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jerry.
Yes, sir. The next item on the agenda is awards for outstanding contributions to a resilient and sustainable future to Matthew Earl and Patrick Dinker.
Right of Matt and Patrick, please come forward, and all the city council that went to Sweden, please come forward as well. Say a few words, but we wanted to thank you personally here at City Hall officially. Without you, we wouldn't have been able to go to Sweden and come back with so many amazing inspirational ideas that we plan to implement in this city to move Maryland forward, to make us one of the sustainable capitals of the country. We really saw a lot of things that we didn't think we'd even see in Sweden. And I know that Dewan was moved and Alderman Savage was moved to really make a real significant change in the way we do things here in Maryland. And it wouldn't have happened without the sponsors of the trip to Sweden. I always use this Confucian saying, the Confucian saying, it is better to travel 10,000 miles than it is to read 10,000 books. And you could show somebody a book, you could show them a movie, you could write a white paper, but nothing substitutes the actual experience of going to a country and seeing these things in motion and in practice and realizing that all the answers that we need to save the planet are being implemented right now in Sweden. And I know my partners on the council would probably like to say a couple of words on that front, too.
Just quickly, I am incredibly fortunate for the opportunity to travel with you twice and you for the first time. And it's obviously inspired me and just how we legislate and how we interact and engage with one another. It gave me insight just not in sustainability, but just in social welfare in general and just how we could change and shape lives here. And so incredibly thankful.
Yeah. And thank you. It's hard to determine what to say, right? Because these were incredibly moving, moving trips. I, you know, even with, with both of them, with the Sweden trip, I went with somebody who has a background in the environment, but was still floored by what I learned over there. And coming out of both of the trips, I really never thought I'd become a transportation, mobility advocate, but it really opened my eyes. We have a dearth of people advocating for that in the area, a lot of environmental, but I think this really is an issue that connects the environment with equity, with the economy. And I think there's a lot I look forward to working on. We came back with, I listed out at least 19 takeaways that we took action items from the Netherlands trip. And I think we're working on a list for Sweden, so hopefully we'll be able to report back next year with a lot of results. But it wouldn't have happened without your support.
So with that, we'd like to present you with, Matt, this one is for you. Got a follow from the board. Thank you. And then sustainable award, sustainability award. And again, we asked a lot of you guys, sir. We've asked a lot of you guys, thank you for coming out tonight. Thank you for even coming on the trip to actually see it in action. And I really think that that made a hell of a difference. And, you know, you, we felt like we were a team out there, and what we achieved and what we saw was remarkable. So from the City of Annapolis and from the citizens of Annapolis, we say a huge thank you to you both and to your foundations. Thank you so much. Thank you.
I do just want to say, I've said it before, and I'll say it again, that the credit goes to you guys, goes to the Annapolis city government, you know, a city government that's interested in projects like this. And the same goes for the county and the state government. If it weren't for that governmental interest, we'd be getting nowhere. So we're just, I think, grateful to be able to, to help, you know, a forward-thinking city government.
Oh, there we go. All right. I kind of echo that, and it's pretty cool to be part of a community that's forward-thinking like this. The environment is, is really important to everybody. Everybody, it doesn't matter who you are, what your party affiliation is, where you come from, whether you're green or pink or purple or whatever, it's for everybody. And to be part of a community that is forward-thinking, and it's not just about the environment, going over to Sweden and see how they operate so efficiently, we could do better as a country to do that. But it's got to start here at the local level. So it's cool to be part of the community and this forward-thinking kind of attitude.
Thank you so much. Thank you. And it wouldn't have happened without you, so thank you so much.
Yes, sir. The next item on the agenda is petitions, reports, and communications, beginning with update from the mayor.
So, good evening. Today, if anyone had a chance to be at City Dock, we had an amazing event for the 25-year anniversary of the Alex Haley memorial, a hugely significant part of this city's identity. It was an amazing turnout. The First Lady Moore was there to give some kind words, and then a plethora of people that go back to that. I can tell you, growing up in Australia, before I even knew the word Annapolis, I knew who Kunta Kinte was. I knew who Alex Haley was. The whole world watched that story unfold, and we would, you know, come home at night when you used to watch TV with your family and you knew what night of the week it was on in Australia anyway. And then we'd all sit glued to the TV to learn this amazing story and this amazing example of resilience. And, and so I was so proud to be part of today's event. I want to thank the people that come before me that made that happen before us. We stand on their shoulders. I'm sure, I know that the first plaque was removed and a calling card was left by the KKK. When that card was removed, I can imagine that the people that fought for that monument faced all sorts of harassment and discrimination. And so, and today, I see children and families all the time sitting around that monument and recognizing the amazing story that unfolded here in this city. It was great to have a delegation from Gambia here as well. That is where the Lord Legionnaire was commissioned to go, to pick up the human cargo and brought that human cargo back to Annapolis that Kunta Kinte was part of. But amazing day, so thank you to everybody that was part of that. So it's been a big year in Annapolis, and I want to thank everyone who worked so hard here at the city and across our community to make things better. We've made progress on choice neighborhoods and the redevelopment of Eastport Terrace and Harbor House. We saw the site plan for City Dock Park and flood prevention approved earlier in the year. And just last Thursday, the planning commission unanimously approved the major site design for the Maritime Welcome Center and Harbor Master Headquarters. We publicly, thank you. We published a new water access plan, comprehensive plan, and new style annual report. We've moved the needle on Robert Eads Park and start construction soon and on Hawkins Cove. We launched Go Time On-Demand Transit and ordered two all-electric buses, which are about to arrive. We sent out an RFP for our e-ferry and continued our successful 10-minute trolleys in both Eastport and State Circle. We got leaf blowers and plastic bag reduction acts over the line. We installed new EV chargers, including the Supercharger on Inner West Street in partnership with BGE and Visit Annapolis. We acquired the Dr. Paulette Moore property next to Cars, Eltonia Beach, worked with the Resilience Authority to select vendors for shoreline restoration and park design, and we will be bringing the beach back. That needs a room. We rolled out our GPS tracking for snowplows and took a comprehensive survey of residents, benchmarking our progress alongside hundreds of other communities nationwide. We've held two successful gun turning events. Chief Jackson reported that the last event, just before Thanksgiving, APD collected 23 firearms and 6,000 rounds of ammunition. We hosted another successful singer-songwriter festival, studied resilience in Sweden, and we said goodbye to Alderman Tyrney and hello to Alderman Huntley. Let's, whatever. So let's hope 2025 brings us as much success, and I, and I thank all, after all that, everyone, and I think everyone, after all that deserves, a happy and hopefully relaxing holiday season. So holiday festivities are now underway, and I will, I want to thank, I want to thank everyone who came to our City Hall Holiday Open House last week. This is the last one for me to host as mayor, and it was one of the best attended and celebratory events we've had here as an open house. It was definitely my favorite, and thank you, Mills Liquor, for that. My thanks to our town crier, Squire Fred, our poet laureate, Jeff Holland, our sponsors, Mills Liquor and Wine, and all those who helped make it a fun and festive evening. I also want to thank my team who organized the open house each year, especially Hillary Raftovich and her holiday elves, who set up the room, got the food, and who make sure the event is festive and delicious. Big round of applause for Hillary. Thank you and the team. We've got lots more holiday events and activities continuing through the new year, including two more nights of Midnight Madness, and the garage was full at the last one, so it's a huge event. Thank you, everybody in the city and around the city for coming into this event and supporting our small businesses here in downtown Annapolis. The next one is on Thursday, December 12th, and then the following Thursday on December 19th. Please come down for Midnight Madness. We love having everybody here, and we love the energy on that evening. The Holiday Market at City Dock, which runs Thursday through Sunday, is, is coming back, and that's its third year, and it's beautiful on the water. Shop with a Cop is this Saturday with Annapolis Police. The Army-Navy Football Game is returning to Maryland this year. The game will be played at Commander's Field in Lanham and air on CBS this Saturday. So go Navy, beat Army. And of course, our amazing Eastport Yacht Club Lights Parade is this Saturday. Please come out for that amazing event. The following weekend, we've got the NapTown Half Marathon on the 21st. The Military Bowl Parade game will be at Navy Stadium this week between Christmas and New Year's. On December 29th, we will light, we will light the City Dock menorah. And finally, on December 31st, the New Year's Eve, the city will host fireworks over Spa Creek at the family-friendly time of 9:00 PM. Just a little bit after my bedtime, but that's great. I'll be there. Perhaps all of this is why Travel and Leisure Magazine has once again named Annapolis as a top Christmas town. It's our second year in a row. Let's hear it for Annapolis at Christmas. It only raises for me to wish you all the best for the season on behalf of the city council. Merry Christmas, Happy Kwanzaa, Happy Hanukkah, and a very happy New Year to you and yours. So thank you, and we look forward to seeing you all in 2025 and continuing our work on behalf of the people of Annapolis. Now, Mr. City Attorney, next thing on the list. Thank you all.
Yes, the next item is report by committees.
Alderman Shana Meyer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Economic Matters will be meeting on December 18th at 5:30 PM.
Thank you. Alderman Gay.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. The Housing Human Welfare Committee meeting will meet December the 16th, 2024, at 6:30 PM.
Thank you. Alderman Neal.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. The Transportation Committee meeting is on this Wednesday, December 11th, 4:00 PM. We are going to have an update from Premium Parking and SP Plus/Metropolitan to discuss the recent garage changeovers for SP Plus and any changes that are going to happen at Hillman.
Thank you. Alderman Finlayson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Rules and City Government Committee met on Friday, December 6th. We took several pieces of legislation, the first being Charter Amendment 2, Annapolis' departmental reorganization, for which we gave a favorable recommendation. Oh 34, Changes in Exempt Service Job Classifications. Again, we gave a favorable recommendation with an amendment on, well, we'll talk about that amendment when the legislation comes before us. Oh 2824, Police Department Contraband Disposal, we gave a favorable recommendation. Oh 29, Permit Requirements Related to Buildings and Construction, we postponed action until the January meeting. Oh 32, Fire Sprinkler System Requirement Classification, gave a favorable recommendation with a Rules Committee Amendment. Our 4624, Task Force to Study Residential Marine Vessels, we gave a favorable recommendation with three amendments. Our 5324, Changes to Executive Pay Scale, we are post, we did postpone action requesting additional information from the HR Director and from the Compensation Committee requesting they reevaluate the city attorney's salary package as well as the deputy positions throughout the budget for all the positions throughout. Our 54, Changes in Position Classification and Pay Plans, we postponed action until the January meeting. Under General Discussion, we had a report from the Office of Community Service with an update from Ms. Young and Ms. Buckland. We had a report on the Comprehensive Rezoning Discussion. Alderman Shana Meyer requests that we postpone it until January 3rd. And the last was the Office of Community Service, but I think it was supposed to be small minority businesses. Mrs. Stewart presented with Mr. Thomasini. Alderman Arnett requested a additional report. Alderman Arnett requested a additional report from that group. And I think that ends our report. The next meeting, of course, is, as I've mentioned, is January 3rd, 2025. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Alderman Pindell Charles and Alderman Huntley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Public Safety Standing Committee, over time, has tried to spice up the meetings a little bit. In the past, we've done spotlight where each department under the Public Safety Standing Committee would talk about a person within their division or department that was doing something great. We also did, um, did you know, fun facts that the audience or the listening public may not know. We also did a Price is Right segment where we had to guess what was higher and what was lower. So we try to do a little bit, little different things. This time for our Wednesday, December 11th, this week, 6:30 in City Council Chambers. At that meeting, we're going to be having our reports from Office of Emergency Management, Police and Fire, but also from your office, Mr. Mayor, NAM and No Harm. So they're going to be giving an update with us as well. And it's going to be spotlighting as we go along over the next couple of months wards. And so we're going to start on this week with Ward 8. And I've talked with and communicated with the Eastport Civic Association leadership. They're going to be sending questions ahead of time, but I also invite any Ward 8 residents to come out, and if they have questions as well, we're going to be taking them from the audience. And so we want to do kind of a little different kind of thing this time around. And so anyone, but we will be giving the regular information as well and giving data and statistics between this year up until the end of November. So again, the Public Safety Committee meeting is scheduled for this coming Wednesday at 6:30 PM. We did have a meeting in November, and we got similar reports. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Alderman Huntley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have, the Finance Committee has not had a meeting since our last City Council meeting, but we will be having our next meeting, excuse me, on this Wednesday at 10:30 AM.
Thank you. Alderman Gay.
Thank you. Just a quick question in reference to what the Alderman from Ward 4 mentioned. Will the full council have an opportunity to, because they said they voted unfavorably? Will we have an opportunity to get the comp work planned or no?
Alderman Finlayson.
I'm sorry. Would you ask the question again?
For the compensation study that we did for staff, you mentioned that you all had voted unfavorably. Is that, am I hearing that accurately?
Postponed.
Yeah, postponed action on it.
Thank you. Anybody else? In queue, Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on agenda.
Yes, sir. The next item on the agenda is comments by the general public.
All right. Nobody signed up to speak? Nope. Okay. Anyone can come forward now and speak if they like, unless it's on Charter Amendment CA 224, the FY 2025 City of Annapolis Department Reorganization, or if it's on changes to exempt service classifications or the fair cannabis employment. But any other subjects other than that, please come forward. Please come forward, you state your full name and address. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Jack Gallagher, 35-year resident of the City of Annapolis.
So, Jack, there will be a moment where we're having the cannabis, are you here to sign up, speak on that?
All right.
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be very soon, so I'll call you back up when that happens.
Yeah.
Yep, I'll call you back up. Yep, thank you. So any other, the other three subjects will have their own individual public hearing, but anybody else like to come forward and speak on anything else? If not, I declare the public hearing closed. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on agenda.
Yes, sir. The next item on the agenda is consent calendar.
Make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, sir. Mayor Buckley.
Aye.
Alderman O'Neill.
Aye.
Alderman Pindell Charles.
Aye.
Alderman Shanomar.
Aye.
Alderman Gay.
Aye.
Alderman Savage.
Aye.
Alderman Arnett.
Aye.
Alderman Huntley.
Aye.
Thank you.
In queue, Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on agenda.
Yes, sir. The next item on the agenda is public hearings, beginning with Charter Amendment CA 224, FY 2025, City of Annapolis Departmental Reorganization.
Okay, we have Jared Lippman signed up to speak. Welcome, Alderman Lippman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, friends, council members. I'll be brief, and my comments are somewhat overlap between both of the two public hearings, but I won't come up twice, I'll just generally address. My general concerns is that the legislation, as it's been presented, doesn't give you enough information to make intelligent decisions. So I would just encourage you to ask a lot of specific questions about the cost of these changes, if these amendments and charter amendments are changed, how it affects the budget. You have a lot of things coming up in the next few years that are going to be expensive, whether it's maintenance to City Dock, whether it's lawsuits that need to get resolved, lots of other projects that'll need to use the resources of city government. And I would encourage you to be very comfortable with knowing how these changes, because they're likely to be more expensive, and of course staffing is, what, 60% to 80% of the budget, how these are going to impact the budget. I don't think you had that necessary information in the part that's been shared publicly at least, so I would ask for that information before making any of these changes. I would also refer to you for some specifics. The staff report suggests that the elevation of HR and IT is needed to keep pace with other, what's the going rate and what's the, what's needed in the industry. Yet, the fiscal impact statement says there's no change at all. Those two statements seem to be incompatible to me, unless it's just saying that a title change is all that's necessary to keep up with what's going rate, and I suspect that's not the answer. I suspect there will be a financial impact. It's not stated what it is, I think you should know what it is. I would also take care to ask a lot of questions about the differences between the departments. Certainly, those department leads that manage the most people, have the most responsibility, and have the biggest budgets should be paid differently and higher than those with the opposite in each of those. And I know there's different tiers and what, that you're considering. I would be, ask a lot of questions to make sure you're comfortable that the pay scale matches the level of responsibility, budget, and staffing. I would also take care to look at the report that you have for the city salaries and compare it to the similar report for the county salaries. You have various positions that are somewhat equivalent in title, but the scope of responsibilities for the county are much more significant, yet the recommendations are to pay them very similar. And in some instances, the city employees would actually get paid more. This is, of course, not a knock on any individual or any department, it's not personal, I think you just make, want to make sure you're spending your money wisely, spending the taxpayers' money wisely. I would also suggest that this approach that you have with the report coming out of budget season is a bit backwards. I would suggest that you think of it in terms of what you can afford first, which is normally what you do in the budget process, and then from what you can afford, then you decide how you're going to spend it. This process seems to suggest that you're going to decide how much you're going to pay, and then you're going to figure out the revenue side later on. And I think, to me, that seems quite backwards. I would suggest instead of having that vacuum, that you ask for at least a sketch, if not more detail than a sketch, of what a five-year budget looks like as it relates to the specific changes that you're, that you would be implementing if these pieces of legislation are approved. And those are my comments. Thank you very much for your attention and time. Have a good holiday, everyone.
Thank you. Alderman, Alderman Lippman, sorry. Alderman Pindell Charles said question.
Yeah, I have a quick question. Alderman Lippman, just correct me if I'm wrong, you indicated that the, the salaries should be compatible with the number of people that are being supervised in that department, is that correct?
They should correspond, I wouldn't say compatible.
Okay, correspond. I just want to kind of refresh everybody's recollection, when we went through COVID, the Office of Emergency Management had, I believe, six employees, and they were the ones who brought the entire city and city departments together to get us through that. And so that didn't necessarily comport with the Office of Emergency Management, in my estimation. So there are, you know, it can be things that are different in different departments, so I think we need to also look at what those different departments are doing, their exceptions to every rule.
Sure, and that's why I listed three big categories. You have level of responsibility, you have staffing, number of people, and size of budget. All three of those factors are indicative of how, how much, how difficult it is. You might also look at, I was trying to be quick about it, but you might also look at levels of education required for the position. Frankly, my, my day job, I would look at how difficult it is to replace that person as to how much that person should be paid and kept. You want to do retention, but you want to make sure you're not getting out of whack with what, how difficult it would be. So there's certainly other factors. Number of people is only one of three top ones in addition to others.
Right. And oftentimes, nobody knew COVID was coming, so there was an emergency situation that we had to deal with. But thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Are we not supposed to do a lot of these factors?
I just, I couldn't type fast enough. Can you share with us your comments? Did you have?
They're briefly outlined, I don't have them right now, so you might need to go to the videotape.
Whatever you could share, we'd appreciate it, there was just too much to type.
Sure. I'll share some of my outline and some more detailed thoughts that I didn't include.
Alderman Gay.
Thank you. MIT is another office, small office, you know, enormous responsibilities. You mentioned that you had concerns about O-3524, I didn't hear those, and if you could, wouldn't mind sharing those, that'd be helpful as well. Thank you.
Sure. It's going to the overall concern of how does, how do these changes, what do they affect the actual cost? And how does that cost, how are you going to pay for that cost? So the classification changes, it's not so clear to me when I read the classification changes, what the change implemented is going to cost in year one, year two, maybe year five. You know, you can go out many years, but I think you want to have a better sense than what's shared publicly of what it's actually going to cost.
Thank you. Anybody else? Thank you.
Specific for MIT, I would also suggest you look at, in the specific language, it says the person in charge of MIT should manage the oversight of it. I think you want more out of your MIT person, you want the actual creation of cybersecurity, I'm sorry, I meant specific for cybersecurity. It says that they should provide oversight of cybersecurity implementation. I think what you really want to say is you want them to develop a cybersecurity plan and implement it and provide oversight. There's a lot of details that I think need further follow-up.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Anybody else like to come forward and speak on CA 2-24? Thank you all. I declare the public hearing closed on CA 2-24. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on agenda.
Yes, the next item on the agenda is public hearings continuing with ordinance O-3424, FY 2025, changes in exempt service job classifications.
Anybody like to come forward and speak on that? We have nobody signed up. Okay, thank you. I'm going to declare the public hearing closed on that. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on agenda.
Yes, sir. The next item on the agenda is O-3524, Fair Cannabis Employment Practices.
Thank you for your patience, Jack. Please come forward and state your full name and address. We now have the hearing on O-35-24. Oh, that's not you, sorry. Okay, please come, are you here to speak on that?
Uh, no. I was here for a public comment section.
Okay, sorry, someone told me I thought you were Jack, so please come forward and give your comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for your patience, too.
It's no problem at all. I, um, excuse me, one second. My name is Jack Gallagher. I live at Five Park Place. I'm a 35-year resident of downtown Annapolis. I want to begin by recognizing and thanking our local leaders and the professional staff who have been so, worked so many hard hours on the City Dock Resilience Plan, that's the subject of my remarks, because most of which, I think, the vast majority of which, I think is well-done and has very broad public support. But I'm here tonight to address the one element of the plan which I think is not well-done and does not have broad support, the Maritime Welcome Center. I was disappointed to learn that at least the site had been approved last week by the Planning Commission. I hope and urge that it go no further in its present form. As currently proposed, it is in the wrong size, in the wrong place, and it will detract tremendously from the great views of the Severn and the Bay, which would otherwise be available from our waterfront. Indeed, I think that as proposed, the Maritime Welcome Center will be an eyesore, a blockade that will be regretted for years to come. Its flaws have been widely noted, including a size much larger than necessary for facilities to accommodate transient boaters, and the total folly of digging a new basement and a facility, new facility to be located in the heart of a flood zone and a resilience project. I strongly urge that the Maritime Welcome Center be reduced in size and relocated. One possible location is at the foot of Prince George Street, behind the Burdice House rather than in front of it. Right now, that's City Street, a dead end. Other possibilities exist, of course, possibly for the city to lease one of the many several, at least, underperforming properties on Dock Street to house a much smaller and size-appropriate and function-appropriate Maritime Welcome Center without really destroying the tremendous positive benefit or limiting the tremendous positive benefit of the entire City Dock plan with a building that's in the wrong place and the wrong size. We urge that the Maritime Welcome Center go back to the drawing board and be delinked from the main City Dock project because it is simply not well-thought-through. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else like to come forward, sorry, on actually what we have the hearing on, which is cannabis legislation? Okay, we're going to declare that public hearing closed. Thank you all. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
Yes, sir. The next item on the agenda is legislative actions, beginning with First Readers, ordinance O-3324, Appeals Process for Property Development in Annapolis.
Mr. Mayor.
Could I get a motion on First Reader for O-33-24, please?
So moved.
So, seconded.
Thank you. Alderman Gay.
I first would like to be added as a co-sponsor. Secondly, am I correct in reading that this was created in October of this year? 10/25/24?
I think it's, who would know? It's pretty, it's very new, yeah, it's very new.
Okay, please add me as a co-sponsor.
Thank you. Alderman Arnett.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask that this be referred to the Appeals Board also?
Yes.
Additionally, refer to the Housing Human Welfare Committee as?
Absolutely. We just got a vote in it, and we can get it to all those committees.
Yeah. First Reader.
In queue. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. On First Reader, thank you everybody, and that will go to Housing, Appeals, Rules and City Government, Planning Commission, and the Economic Matters Committee. Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on agenda.
Yes, sir. Resolutions, R-5724, First Reader, Annual Meeting and Tourism Industry Reception Fee Waiver.
Thank you. Could I get a motion for R-57-24 on First Reader?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Alderman Gay.
I would like to be added as a co-sponsor, and I'm curious where this is being held.
What, locations?
Yeah, it says, but there is nothing in the staff report that indicates where.
Well, we are lucky enough to have the director right here, if you'd like to come to the microphone and a little summary. We're very happy you're bringing people here, thank you.
Alderman Gay, good to see you. It will be in the parking lot behind the visitor center, that, it's called the Ellipse, and there's, it will be tented, very specifically, and you're all invited.
Great, it was great last time. Anybody else? Question? Thank you. Thanks a lot, Kristen. Thank you. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. Let's refer that to our, to the Finance Committee.
And I'd like to be added as a co-sponsor.
Thank you.
Me as well.
Thank you. Can't wait to be there with you guys. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on agenda.
Yes, moving on to Second Readers, beginning with ordinance O-624, Citywide Prohibition on New Drive-Thru Windows.
Is there a motion to adopt O-66-24 on Second Reader?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Alderman Pindell Charles.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of things about the drive-through that I'm learning even more recently. Apparently, I've learned this last week, that the Walgreens in Ward Three is closing next month. And from my understanding, the reason that it's closing is because Walgreens is looking for establishments that have drive-throughs. I'm really sorry about that. I have seniors, of course, in my ward who are upset about that. And I know we have two other Walgreens within the city, one in Eastport and one in Western Annapolis. I don't know if eventually they're on the block to be shut down as well. But it's really disheartening that it's coming to that. Apparently, a lot of them are doing that. And so I have continually indicated that I'm really not in favor of this legislation for a variety of reasons. I think we've all given our reasons. But I'm really heartbroken about at least the one in my ward and the reasons, one of the reasons given. And that's my understanding of the information that I'm getting. So, thank you for the opportunity.
To be clear, this legislation is not shutting down that Walgreens.
You mean the one on West Street in Ward Three?
Yeah, we're not shutting it down.
No, right. I understand. But what I'm saying is that the, many of these establishments are being shut down because they don't have drive-throughs. So, but that's the information I'm getting. So, got it. Thank you.
Alderman Shandelmeyer had his hand up first.
According to CNN Business, Walgreens is closing 1,200 stores due to competition from online retailers, not due to drive-throughs.
Thank you. Alderman Finlayson, oh, sorry.
I didn't say that was the only reason. I said, that's one of the reasons.
Alderman Finlayson, then Alderman Huntley, Alderman Gay, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sorry, Alderman. This legislation concerns me because it appears that we are not giving everyone a fair opportunity. This legislation smacks of discrimination against seniors, against folks with disabilities, against parents with children both big and small. I think we should not be in the habit of addressing any legislation that puts any group at a disadvantage in our city. So this is one of several that I feel strongly we should be aware of our actions and how it appears to the very people we represent. So I have spoken in opposition to this, and I will vote in opposition to it. And I would ask us all to be cognizant of what our legislation does and the various groups within our community who are negatively impacted. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Huntley.
I share exactly the concerns of Alderman Pindell Charles and Alderman Finlayson. But I have a really different view on this bill. And it's precisely because we need to be considerate of our seniors, of our people with disabilities, of our people who are not able to drive, that we need to make sure that we protect our walkable city. I know seniors in my ward who live in my ward because they can walk to their pharmacy. And I'm petrified that our CVS downtown will close and prevent that. And having more drive-throughs, having a drive-through open on Forest Drive and replace our MNT Bank downtown, or our PNC Bank downtown, or our CVS downtown, all of those will make it so that we are discriminating against people with epilepsy who can't drive, seniors who have decided that it's, they can't see well enough, blind people, all of these groups who, I share this exact concern that you guys have. But I think in that situation, we have drive-throughs all around the country. We don't have a lot of places where people can live without a car. Annapolis, downtown Annapolis, Ward One of Annapolis, is one of the few places that we can do that. And this legislation will protect it.
Thank you. Alderman Gay.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. Quickly, to the alderman from Ward One, the very real privilege that your constituents in Ward One have is that they have a CVS that they can walk to. And to the point of the alderwoman from Ward Three, who has to live with the reality of the, her constituents or her ward, predominantly older African Americans, losing out on a place where they can't walk to because it's closing, they won't be able to drive through because it's closing, leaves them at a significant disadvantage. So equity is key in this. And I'm listed as a sponsor on this. But I've stated even in our committee meetings that the equity report, which I'm grateful that the alderwoman from Ward Three put in an ordinance that this is required on every single piece of legislation that comes before us, because it states the very, very harsh reality that the alderwoman from Ward Four said, that this legislation significantly impacts communities that obviously we represent, care, and are born from. And so I think with that in mind is that there has to be a place where we meet in the middle and we serve all constituents. And so, yes, we need a CVS that people can walk to. We need a Bank of America that people can walk to, the SunTrust ATM down here. But we also need to, you know, be cognitive of the very real challenges that underserved communities in particular face, older people face. And so that's why I was hesitant to support this. The caveat to my support and where I would like confirmation from the sponsor and from staff, because I remember very vividly that we discussed an amendment that would allow, and I'll just use my example straight up. If I'm on West Street, and actually, let me use something closer to my ward that my constituents use. If I'm at the Truist Bank in Forest Drive, at the, that's at the intersection of Bay Ridge and Forest, and I own and operate that bank, and as it currently is, is a Truist, and I'd like to sell it, let's just say to, you know, BB&amp;T, would the new owners still be able to take advantage of the special exemption and operate as it is currently zoned? And how long would that, would that last for? And I think that the big thing for me here is we preserve the existing drive-throughs and access to drive-throughs that we have within the city of Annapolis, which to me, I think we have a fair, you know, number of, you know, there always could be more. But if we could preserve what's existing, I'd be much more comfortable as opposed to just losing out on the opportunities for drive-throughs altogether.
And I think there was some grandfathering in there. So Alderman Shandelmeyer.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I would like to address this one specific question, then I have another comment later when we get to that. But on the alderman's specific question here, you can find that on the legislative summary. It gets into the very specifics of your question. It does allow currently in existence, drive-through businesses as a non-conforming use, and they are allowed even though the ownership of a building may change, as long as the building is not, property has not been abandoned for more than one year.
Curious if, and this is something that we probably should have, but again, I was under the impression that the amendment would be following this. Is one year enough turnaround time for a business to, let's just say, go from a Dunkin' to a, you know, whatever? Is that enough time for a business to be able to make the economics work?
Renovations are not considered abandonment.
Thank you. Alderman Savage.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I think a couple of things. As far as the seniors, you know, I try to be very sensitive to that. I do have a lot of seniors in my ward. And, but I think it's important, and this is pointed out to me by Alderman Shandelmeyer, that we want to create a community that, where our seniors can age in place, not just in the building in place, but in the community, in our community and stay here. And if we have more, if we just continue to perpetuate auto-centric development, obviously you need a car to get to a lot of that safely. The seniors are not going to, they're not going to cross a busy road and walk through a busy parking lot. And so I think this is a part of making sure that we do have accessibility for everyone. And what, because really, I think this comes down to building community. And that's what we have, we adopted with the comp plan, a vision for more mixed use, for pedestrian-friendly development. And again, it's building community. And when this clicked with me was when we received testimony from old Fourth Ward residents, and, you know, they were displaced by a parking garage. And it clicked to me that, you know, they're right, that parking garages, parking lots, drive-throughs, they don't build community. And that's really what we're here to do, is to build community. Because we want to, we have all kinds of ideas. We want, in some places, expand outdoor dining where it's appropriate. We want, I, goals to expand our housing in the city. You know, when you look at developments like the Eastport, I was getting, screwing up the name, the Neighborhood Choice, where half of that property is, if you look from the top down, half of it's rooftop, half of it's parking. You know, and it's the whole idea of, again, that's not kind of community we want to, we want to build. Because when you have a drive-through, you have to have a huge queue for the cars to the parking lot, because they, they sometimes back out into the street. So that's, so who's most impacted by, by drive-throughs if they continue to perpetuate? Again, it's those who can't drive. It's those, our kids. It's the 20% of seniors who can't or don't drive. And so I think this is not anything extreme. It's been done by a number of other jurisdictions. It simply, I think, I'm still my colleague's line, I think, as far as it just stops the bleeding. It's no new ones, but we can give existing ones replaced under the grandfathering clause. So I think it's a reasonable step to go towards. And I think it's, really for me, it's about the community and how to build a safe community for everybody.
Thank you. Alderman Shandelmeyer had his hand up first, and Alderman Arnett.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And this will be my final point. We also know through our land value study that this is a development pattern that is not financially solvent. We have seen through this that we end up subsidizing a lot of this, that this does not produce the revenue that we have to spend on the infrastructure for servicing it through roadways, water, sidewalk, sewer. That means we are subsidizing these businesses. We are subsidizing McDonald's. We are subsidizing BB&amp;T. We are subsidizing Wendy's. We are subsidizing Dunkin'. And if we are doing that, that is services that we can spend in other areas. We can spend that on more officers, more firefighters, better sidewalks, better roadways. We could do a tax cut. But that is money that I think can be spent either through better functioning government or done, given back to our constituents in some way, rather than being given out to a corporation that isn't based here in our city. And those numbers don't lie. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Arnett.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I'm speaking in the spirit of what I thought we had when we passed the comprehensive plan. We have got to stop doing things that are auto-centric, that are burning fossil fuels, whether it's leaf blowers or encouraging people to get in their car. I'm quite surprised at the falter all over this because frankly, I think for the long-term future, there are not going to be any new drive-through windows. There's just not going to be that much development that is going to require them. To the extent that we are successful in enacting the comp plan, we're going to be doing mixed-use communities along major transit routes where we're going to encourage people not to use their car and not to use drive-through windows. But all those people who use drive-through windows now can still use them. This does not take that away from them. Unfortunately, it does not take that away from them. So I think we really need to be looking forward. We need to be thinking in the spirit of the comprehensive plan. We need to be thinking about getting out of our automobiles and not blowing our leaves with gas-powered motors. So I'm in sympathy with this legislation.
Thank you. Alderman Pindell Charles.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two more notes. If we recall back in the original draft of the comp plan, there were only two small references of seniors, something about their bad driving habits, and I can't remember what the other thing was, until Alderman Arnett and I talked about it, and we realized there needed to be something more in there. And I hope we're not harkening back to the old draft, because it's very important. The second thing about subsidizing corporations who may not be registered, whether it's Wendy's, McDonald's, or Dunkin', which is all in my ward, let's hearken back to COVID when we needed drive-throughs, and the people who work there needed jobs to keep them going as well. And so if it wasn't for drive-throughs, we would have suffered immensely. Not only the McDonald's and the Wendy's and the Dunkins, but the people who work there would have suffered as well. So we needed them then. And not that I'm asking for another COVID, but we didn't see that coming either. And so we need to be prepared for anything that might come along. And this, to me, is stymying in it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Alderman Gay.
Thank you so much.
Could I vote after this?
And the reality is, is that, you know, because they are, they keep saying, you know, we can't be auto-centric, we can't be auto-centric, we can't be auto-centric. I appreciate that as much as anyone, having had the opportunity to attend, attend trips both to the Netherlands and Sweden, where there was disenfranchisement, you know, and maybe as it relates to social issues and access to vehicles and access to walking and all of that. But you know what their government did? They actually built the infrastructure so that they could take advantage of public transportation. The city of Annapolis, and I love the bus driver that was just here earlier today, the transportation chief, Marcus Moore, is one of my favorite directors. We have a failing transportation system. It's terrible. And unless we connect the, our, our transportation system with the counties, creating this legitimate regional transportation system, unless we get our buses running to the poorest communities on a, on a much more consistent basis, unless we expand the hours. If I work at the McDonald's and I get off at 12, guess what? I got to spend $40, $25 to get home because our bus system doesn't operate that late. And so there are legitimate things that we need to do to change the infrastructure and public transportation if we want to get away from car-centric. The fear in doing that and getting away from car-centric is that we build this infrastructure, you know, for bikes or whatever, and it's not connecting. People can't take full advantage of it. That's the potential I hope that we untap, that I've seen, you know, thanks to the trips that we had an opportunity to go on. Lastly, the economics of this, because I'm very concerned about what you stated about the Walgreens closing there, because there is, you know, rumor that the Walgreens in, in Eastport is closing, has closed several times over the last couple of months, unannounced to consumers. And so we also have to have that conversation. And I'm pleased to serve on the economics committee with Alderman Shandelmeyer about how we bring sustainable business here, if we're going to be pushing out, you know, certain types. And so I'm, yeah, I'm going to support the idea of this because I don't think it'll have a drastic impact. We have the existing drive-throughs. And to be quite frank, as the alderman mentioned, I don't see much development in the next couple of years anyway, so.
Thank you. Okay. All those in favor of adopting 0-6-24 on second reader, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt 0-6-24 on third reader?
So moved. Second.
Madam City Clerk, please call a roll.
Yes, sir. Mayor Buckley.
Aye.
Alderwoman O'Neill.
No.
Alderman Pindell Charles.
No.
Alderman Finlayson.
No.
Alderman Shandelmeyer.
Aye.
Alderman Gay.
Aye.
Alderman Savage.
Aye.
Alderman Arnett.
Aye.
Alderman Huntley.
Aye.
Passes.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item of agenda.
Yes, sir. Had one change here. The next item is 01224, Maritime Industry Economic Development Fund.
Is there a motion to? Is there a motion to, thank you. Can I get a second?
Second.
Alderman Gay.
Thank you. I'm just curious with the conversation that we are having, as it relates to the house barges or houseboats, is this not almost in line with some of the conversations that the Alderman from Ward Eight has mentioned about use and what could potentially happen on the property?
I think, no, I think this is about developing a fund, Alderman Savage.
Yeah, for, for them to.
Well, so this one in particular, correct me wrong, Alderman, but actually, we found out that, this is according to the staff report, I think, back in the 1980s, when the maritime districts were originally created, this fund was supposed to have been set up, but never was. And we encountered, we realized that when we last updated the code back in '22 or '21, whenever it was, I think. And this is just, I believe, just meant to say, so the intention of the fund is that when they have non-maritime use on the property, one of the incentives, if they want to have more non-maritime, is to pay money into this fund, or to pay a fee that would go into this fund. And the fund is meant to support building, building, I guess, some of the framework for new businesses and training and that kind of thing.
Quick question. I was under the impression that the deterrent that the city was using, as opposed to, you know, charging the property owner a fee as being, as being proposed right now, is that if you owned a maritime, a, a property in a maritime zone, and you went above the floor space, like if they, like, for example, at my previous job here, we worked in Rob, Ross's ward, in Ward Eight, they sold two, or they rented two of the spaces out, and it crossed the maritime threshold. And so we ended up having to leave and find new space. And that was to preserve the integrity of the maritime industry there. Is that not enough of a deterrent, as opposed to having people pay into this fund?
This is not a deterrent. This is simply creating a place for the money that has already been collected as a result of what we passed in O-2521. It needs to go somewhere. I actually don't know that we needed an ordinance to do it. We create funds by rules and regulations in the Department of Finance all the time. This one is important enough that we're putting it in the code, but it is simply a place for a dedicated fund, for those monies to go, so that they will then be used only for the purposes that were stipulated in the ordinance, which is to further the interests of maritime in the city. So it's not a deterrent. It is part of what we actually passed in O-2521. And we are having people, One Marina, actually take advantage of what we passed in O-2521. They put in, they use their trigger, they put in a new shop, and they're paying money. And it's actually pleasantly, pleasant amount of money. It's not huge, but it's nice. But the finance director needs a place to put that. So this, that's all this does. It creates that fund pursuant to O-2521.
Okay. All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt O-1224 on third reader?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk.
I'd like to be added as a sponsor.
Thank you.
Me too, please.
Mayor Buckley.
Aye.
Alderman O'Neill.
Aye.
Alderman Pendell-Charles.
Aye.
Alderman Finlayson.
Aye.
Alderman Shandermeyer.
Aye.
Alderman Gay.
Aye.
Alderman Savage.
Aye.
Alderman Arnett.
Aye.
Alderman Huntley.
Aye.
Thank you. It passes, all yes.
Right. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item of the agenda.
Yes, sir. The next item on the agenda is Resolution R-5124, 2024 Go Bowling Military Bowl Parade and Football Game.
Is there a motion to adopt R-5124 on second reader?
So moved.
Second.
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, sir. Mayor Buckley.
Aye.
Alderman O'Neill.
Aye.
Alderman Pendell-Charles.
Aye.
Alderman Finlayson.
Aye.
Alderman Shandermeyer.
Aye.
Alderman Gay.
Aye.
Alderman Savage.
Aye.
Alderman Arnett.
Aye.
Alderman Huntley.
Aye.
Thank you. Passes.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item of the agenda.
Yes, sir. The next item on the agenda, Resolution R-5524, Budget Process Timeline for Fiscal Year 2026.
Is there a motion to adopt R-5524?
So moved.
Second.
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, sir. Mayor Buckley.
Aye.
Alderman O'Neill.
Aye.
Alderman Pendell-Charles.
Aye.
Alderman Finlayson.
Aye.
Alderman Shandermeyer.
Aye.
Alderman Gay.
Aye.
Alderman Savage.
Aye.
Alderman Arnett.
Aye.
Alderman Huntley.
Aye.
Thank you.
Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item of the agenda.
Yes, sir. The next item on the agenda is R-5624, 2025 Salary Review Commission Members Updated.
Can I get a motion on R-56?
So moved.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, sir. Mayor Buckley.
Aye.
Alderman O'Neill.
Aye.
Alderman Pendell-Charles.
Aye.
Alderman Finlayson.
Aye.
Alderman Shandermeyer.
Aye.
Alderman Gay.
Aye.
Alderman Savage.
Aye.
Alderman Arnett.
Aye.
Alderman Huntley.
Aye.
Thank you. Passes.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item of the agenda.
Yes, sir. The next item on the agenda is R-5824, Postponing Enforcement of the Ban on Gas-Powered Leaf Blowers.
Thank you. Can I get a motion on that, please?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Arnett. I'm wondering if a sponsor would accept a friendly amendment to shorten the time for this delay somewhat. I think we can get this program in place sooner, maybe within three months. I was pleasantly surprised by the number of people that responded to my constituent email that really do want to see this ban on the gas-powered leaf blowers put in place. I think they are comfortable, some were not even comfortable with the city helping to ease the transition from gas to electric. But I think that's the least we can do. This is, again, a part of changing the process where we move away from fossil fuels. It is, the, the electric is going to be more expensive. We've already budgeted the money, $105,000 for this reimbursement program. And so I would offer that we only postpone for three months.
Alderman O'Neill.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
That's a sponsor, right? But you have to see it's a friendly amendment.
No, I'm, I'm the point of order, I'm, yeah.
Are you the sponsor? Are you, are you the, is it your ordinance?
Yeah.
I thought it was yours coming, sorry. Apologies. Alderman Savage.
Just, I mean, should I second that?
Well, just accept it, that's all, yeah.
I mean, I'll just, I'll accept it as a friendly amendment.
Okay. Thank you. And then I'll go back over to Alderman O'Neill, sorry.
Thank you. I had two questions about it. I know that the deputy director is here, and I know that the five-month postponement was based on her need for time in order to complete the program. And so I would like to make sure that that is, in fact, going to work in her timetable. And also, my second question, that if I had read it closely, I probably would have had this answer. I've had several constituents that were private citizens, were wondering if they're privy to the same that we've talked about, voucher for commercial.
Deputy Director Guile could come up for the first part, and then Alderman Savage could answer that on the way up. Is anybody eligible for the funds? Alderman Savage, you know?
I think that's, it's still, to be determined, but the idea is for local landscape companies and residents, and maybe even looking to see if we can have it apply, a little bit retroactive, they have a receipt. Because we've had some people who've made the transition and kind of want to, we want to give those early adopters potential benefit.
And that would be my request, is I have had at least two people reach out to me saying, they've heard the ban, they bought, they were complying, and if we're going to give vouchers to others, then because they've complied, they shouldn't be.
They should be eligible.
They should be eligible.
Okay, thank you.
If they have receipts.
Keep those receipts, please. Deputy Director, the question was, is three months enough time?
Good evening. Jackie Guile, Deputy City Manager for Resilience and Sustainability. To your question about sufficient time to put together the voucher program, so we have just requested the supplemental appropriation of $105,000 to proceed with the program. We do not yet have that money appropriated. We're going through that process. So we have not started working on the program yet. So once we have that money appropriated, then we'll start working on the program. We have touched base with the Resilience Authority about their interest in running that program for us, either through a third party, the executive director of the Resilience Authority, and just working through possibilities, thought about perhaps hiring a, an employee, part-time contractor employee of the Resilience Authority to run that program through the Resilience Authority, just thinking about different possibilities. So that's one possibility, to do it through the Resilience Authority or to do it through city staff. So we're working through just the logistics of how we would do it. So we'd have to come up with the program, get the money appropriated, and then, then put it together. We could do it in three months. The city, the Resilience Authority was working on another project with the city, which they now have completed, and now they can turn to work with us on it now in December. So we could do it in three months. That is a possibility.
Thank you. Okay. Alderman Gay.
Again, just for clarity, which I like on all this, the voucher program, there's a supplemental appropriation. So the money would still have to be passed by the city council. So why would you accept his friendly amendment when we haven't even postponed? That, that could be debated for more than three months, who knows? And, and secondly, even though we're not debating this tonight, I will hope at some point that, you know, once you do have the program up and running, that we have an opportunity to, you know, discuss it. I recall when I proposed a voucher program, my colleagues gave me the blues, and they wanted, you know, every single detail, they wanted to know where it was going, how the vouchers were being selected, all of these things. And I would expect the same thing when we're gift, basically gifting electric leaf blowers to the city. And so, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Savage.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, just to, so the idea with this is to send a message to the public that we are trying to respond to concerns. Now, that said, I do want to be, do want to be for with that. A vast majority of the comments have been positive, but we received a few concerns about, from landscape companies, but even the majority of them have, have not raised that concern. But wanting some sort of, kind of financial assistance. Now, that doesn't, that doesn't necessarily require a delay of the program, but I think it sends a message to them that what this essentially is going to do is not, not necessarily going to delay enforcement per se, but it's going to delay the fine part of it. So we're saying it's essentially a grace period, they're not going to get fined, and then we're going to be able to help them with the transition and education as a part of that. But I do think, to your other point, I think it's right, we can have, certainly have a conversation on the money when that comes before us, because we don't have all the details yet on that.
You have a discussion. Okay. Roll call, please.
Sure.
Point of order, roll call on amendment or final legislation?
Amendment.
Thank you.
Amendment, okay.
Wrong call on that?
Mayor Buckley.
Aye.
Alderman O'Neill.
Aye.
Alderman Pendell-Charles.
No.
Alderman Finlayson.
No.
Alderman Shandermeyer.
Aye.
Alderman Gay.
Aye.
Alderman Savage.
Aye.
Alderman Arnett.
Aye.
Alderman Huntley.
No.
This passes, one, two, three.
Right. Can I get a motion on that as amended, please?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, sir. Mayor Buckley.
Aye.
Alderman O'Neill.
Aye.
Alderman Pendell-Charles.
No.
Alderman Finlayson.
No.
Alderman Shandermeyer.
Aye.
Alderman Gay.
No.
Alderman Savage.
Aye.
Alderman Arnett.
Aye.
Alderman Huntley.
No.
I got you. I'm sorry. I'm sorry to write it down. Okay. I do apologize, I was in a zone. I'm so sorry. Okay, would you mind if we?
We can do it again, please, yeah.
Let's, for the record, would you mind doing it again? Okay. I will do it correctly this time, I promise.
Okay.
It's five.
Five, four.
All right.
Four against, right?
Mr. Lawrence, thank you for your assistance.
Thank you. Motion passes. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item of the agenda. Thank you, Deputy Director.
That concludes the agenda, Mr. Mayor.
Is there something we added on the bottom? What about Alderman Gay's piece? He took it off.
He took it off.
Oh, he took it off? Oh, thank you, cool. Okay, everybody, is there anything else for good order? Alderman O'Neill.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I have three things. One, I had the opportunity to attend the Kunta Kinte 25 Year Celebration today. Fabulous event put on, and I know that they honored Carl Snowden. Everybody that was involved in planning it did a really nice job. And the poet laureate from Maryland was phenomenal. On a sad note, one of my residents was the fatality that happened on Thanksgiving Day. David Chan was a beloved member of our community, and walked his dog every day, talked with us a lot. His funeral is Wednesday evening, from 5:00 to 7:00 at David Taylor, if anybody's interested. They also have a GoFundMe set up to help his family with funeral services, that's on Facebook, and I'm happy to share it with anybody that's interested. But just keep his family in your hearts, because it's been a really rough time for them. And I wanted to say thank you to my colleagues for a wonderful year.
All right. Thank you. Alderman Gay.
Thank you. Just wanted to quickly acknowledge, Crystal Brown and Mount Mariah Church did a co-drive this past week. It went very well. They had a ton of donations from the community, and they are handing those out.